Well, I don't have my picture on there.
Um, I have a box that says.
Yes, but my picture's not there. I don't know how to get it there either.
You have your little thing covered up, Wayne, on your camera at the top of your computer?
No, it's like that.
But can you slide it? Is there like a little slide over it?
Well, I don't know.
Mine has like a little slidey thing that I can like close it and look like that or like that.
No, this one don't have that.
Yeah, mine does either.
Kathy just sent Wayne a li- a link.
Okay.
I'm gonna start.
Come on. Don?
Okay.
Hello?
Okay. Good evening. Tonight's invocation will be led by me and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Ramek and we ask you to stand and join us, please.
Okay. Bye.
Tonight, we ask for guidance and assistance in making decisions that will be the best for our city and our community and we plead with patience to listen to everybody and give everybody the same amount of weight in their opinions. Thank you. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the Planning Commission for February 11th of 2021 is now called to order. Before we call the roll, I need to explain that the Governor's Social Distancing Directive for COVID-19 have changed our meeting format. First and foremost, I need to say we can only have a limited number of people in this room. Chairs are placed over X's and we ask you not to move your chairs, please. If there's not room in this area for you, a chair for you, Robin will help you in the lobby and she'll swat- help people come in and out after their particular item of interest is finished. The Planning Commissioners, you can tell are not all here, in board chambers with me are Rick Ramek and me. And then Zooming with us are Michelle Baker, Alternates Baker Goldsmith and Carrie Hobbie, also Commissioner Ladonte Walker and Commissioner Wayne Thomason. And they're on Zoom and you can see them at the top of the screens. Okay. Like I said, we only have 20 people. If you have an item of interest you wish to speak on, please sign the appropriate sheet in the back and we will call your names in the order in which they're signed. Once you've spoken, we do ask that you make room for anybody that might be waiting to enter and you can listen. Robin will help you find a place in the lobby. Now, Ms. Sweet Dobbs, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Rick Ramek.
Here.
Wayne Thomason. Wayne, are you here?
We heard him a minute ago. Maybe we come back to him.
Yeah, he's, he's there, but he's muted.
Okay.
Okay, how about now?
There you go.
Gotcha.
I'm here.
Okay. Carrie Hobbie.
She's muted.
Wave your hand up, Carrie.
Carrie.
Yep.
Baker Jackson Goldsmith.
Here.
Brian White, which Brian let us know ahead of time that he would not be here this evening. Ladonte Walker.
Here.
Thank you.
And Hillary Janet.
Here. I forget. Yeah, I have to answer too. Okay. All right. First of all, may I have a motion for approval of last month's minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the minutes for last month are approved. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications which demonstrate compliance with all applicable city requirements. These items shall not involve any discussion by the Planning Commission or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners so desire, individual items may be discussed and/or voted upon as a separate matter of business. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda with the staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Stoddard, would you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. Item number one on tonight's consent agenda is a conditional use application, CU-21-005. It is for construction of a new religious institution at approximately 410 Highland Street, which is the southwest corner of Highland and Delaware. The staff finding for this application is that the requirements for applications submitted have been met in accordance with Hot Springs Code Section HSC 16-2-75. A religious institution is listed as a conditional use in the R4 Medium High Density Residential Zone District per Hot Springs Code Section 162152. Submitted site and the development plans demonstrate compliance with the standards and development plan requirements for conditional use consideration as found in Article 8 of the city's zoning ordinance. So the recommendation for this request is for approval with 18 conditions and I'll read each of those into the record. So condition number one is all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations, policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, the development site shall be constructed, developed, in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of building, drive, parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage. Number three, all exterior lighting shall be fully downcast and full cutoff and shall contain illumination on the subject property. Lighting shall be positioned so as to not create a nuisance to adjacent properties. Number four, one indirectly illuminated with shielded, fully downcast light fixture monument sign not to exceed four foot in height and eight feet in width may be erected along the Highland Street frontage, subject to a separate signed permit application, review, approval, and permit prior to installation. Number five, separate permit application shall be made by applicant to the Hot Springs Engineering Department and permit shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. Number six, this use and activity shall not impose any undue hardship or nuisance upon nearby neighborhood. Number seven, electrical service to this development shall be underground per ordinance number 6162. Number eight, as requested by the applicant, hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 for the church office, and service times will be Sunday mornings, 10 a.m. to 12 p.m., and Friday evenings, 7 p.m. to 9 p.m. Number nine, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. The violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit by the Planning Commission per Hot Springs Code Section 16-2-79. Condition number 10, prior to submitting for a building permit, obtain GO report and incorporate recommendations into project design. Number 11, prior to submitting for a building permit, include materials and compaction details. Number 12, prior to submitting for a building permit, show pre and post cuts and fills for approval by city engineer. Thirteen, prior to submitting for a building permit, include property line offsets. Number 14, prior to submitting for a building permit, show erosion controls, stormwater pollution prevention plan. Fifteen, prior to submitting for a building permit, show culvert details and plan to decelerate water, stormwater outfall for approval by stormwater manager if needed. Number 16, prior to submitting for a building permit, show curb and gutter on Delaware and Highland Streets with the preferred location of sidewalks being along the property line inside the right-of-way. Number 17, prior to submitting for a building permit, submit plans for driveway to proposed parking in existing building with minimum driveway radius of 15 feet. And finally, number 18, required public improvement shall be completed or a bond for completion provided prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So moving on to item number two. This is a conditional use application as well, CU-21-005, for a moving truck and trailer rental business located on property at 520 East Grand Avenue. The, the findings for this application is the requirements for applications submitted have been met in accordance with Hot Springs Code. Hot Springs Code Section 16-2-152, which is the Table of Permitted Uses, lists vehicle sales or leasing as a conditional use in the C2 Zone District as a result of passage of ordinance number 6352. Applicant site and the development plan demonstrates compliance with the standards and development plan requirements for conditional use consideration found in Article 8 of Hot Springs Zoning Code. Staff's recommendation for this application is for approval with nine conditions and I'll read those into the record as well. All construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations, policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, the development site shall be constructed, developed, in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of drives, locations and number of moving van vehicle storage spaces, installation of sidewalk and signage. Number three, all exterior lighting shall be fully downcast and full cutoff and shall contain illumination on the subject property. Lighting shall be positioned as to not create a nuisance to any adjacent properties. Excuse me. Number four, a separate signed permit application, review, approval, and permit shall be required prior to the installation of any signs on this site. Number five, separate permit application shall be made by the applicant to the Hot Springs Engineering Department and permit shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. Number six, onsite vehicle washing has, has not been approved and cannot be permitted on the site. Vehicle storage must be on the private property. Number seven, vehicle storage must be on the private property and cannot be in the public right-of-way. Number eight, applicant's requested days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., and Saturday, 8 a.m. to noon. And number nine, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. The violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit by the Planning Commission per Hot Springs Code Section 16-2-79. And that completes the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. We didn't have anybody signed up, right?
No, not on, not on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And frankly, I get a little confused here. Have we already approved it or do we have to approve it after you've read it?
I think there needs to be a, a vote.
A vote, okay.
To now approve those two items as read with conditions.
Okay. Then we will now vote for these two items in the consent agenda. I'm gonna call the roll just so I don't make a mistake in it. I don't call the roll. I do call the roll.
No.
You call the roll? It's been a night. I slept. Thank you. Would you please do that, Ms. Dobbs Sweet?
Sure. Michelle Baker.
Yes.
Baker Jackson Goldsmith.
Yes.
Ladonte Walker.
Yes.
Carrie Hobbie.
Approve.
Wayne Thomason.
Yes.
Rick Ramek.
Approve.
And Hillary Janet.
Yes, I approve. Okay, that was a little bit messy, but we have approved the consent agenda. And now, Mr. Stoddard, if you would please read new business.
Yes, ma'am. Item number three, first and only item under new business tonight, is a request for planned development zoning and site plan approval for what is to be known as Silver Key and roadside plan development, which will be a vacation home rental project located at 258 Five Points Road.
Thank you. And I need a motion to approve to get this on the floor for discussion. A motion and approve do not mean you necessarily are voting in favor of the item, but just that we will discuss it and find more information. May I have a motion to approve?
Approved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Then, please hold your questions, we all know, until everything has been presented and other people have had a chance to speak. Mr. Stoddard.
Yes, ma'am. Applicant Aaron Burris, engineer with Atoka Inc., representing property owner Joseph France, seeks plan development, PD zoning, and site plan approval to construct a large-scale, short-term rental project on the subject property to be known as Silver Key and Roadside Plan Development. The subject property consists of approximately 21.4 acres of land and is currently zoned RL Lake Area Residential. This property has a future land use map designation of residential low and is located in Board of Directors District Number Three. Is that correct? Three? Uh... We had it as a...
It's five.
Okay. We may have that. That may be a typo in our staff report.
It's behind Walmart on Central, whatever that town is.
Yes. So, the recommendation for the zone change finding to the Planning Commission, the requested zone change from RL to PD for the proposed Hot Springs Lodge and Resort project on the subject property meets the standards for favorable consideration according to Hot Springs Code 16247E. So the zone change recommendation would be to recommend the board's adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning map, designating the subject property plan development for residential, short-term residential, and usual and customary uses, and amending the future land use map to designate the property as residential medium high because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the requested change meets the standard required by Hot Springs Code 16247E. The change helps to implement an approved city plan and is compatible with surrounding development and zoning. The site plan finding is the project site and development plan comply with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16247 and other Hot Springs Codes applicable to this review subject to compliance with the conditions of approval. So the site plan recommendation is for approval for the Silver Key and Roadside Plan Development generally located at 258 Five Points Road, subject to the following conditions, because when these conditions are applied, the application complies with the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16247. There are seven conditions recommended for that, so if I could, I'll go ahead and read those into the record. All construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the development plan and all approved conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, the development site shall be constructed in strict accordance with the approved PD Zone District for Silver Key and Roadside PD Site Plan, including but not limited to land uses, street construction, driveways, sidewalks, green slash open spaces, parking, landscaping, and utilities. Number three, separate permit applications shall be made by the applicant to the Hot Springs Engineering Department and permit shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. Number four, all common elements within the development, including but not limited to the streets, shall be privately owned and shall be maintained by the property owner and not the responsibility of the City of Hot Springs. Number five, provide details for retaining walls and sewalls and include energy approval for sewalls and docks prior to obtaining a building permit for construction of any of the buildings on site. Number six, should future land division be desired, preliminary subdivision and final subdivision applications and Planning Commission considerations shall be required. And finally, number seven, all exterior light sources shall be fully downcast, fully shielded to prevent glare into the eyes of drivers or pedestrians and surrounding areas, containing all illumination on the subject land, and shall not trespass on adjacent areas, including but not limited to streets, driveways, parking lots, or other off-street, off-site vehicle use areas. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant here? Would you like to?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll need to ask you to tell us your name and your address.
Aaron Burrows, 110 Hunter Cove Court.
And if you can maintain five minutes.
Do what?
Five minutes.
Well, I guess I don't know if there's any questions to be, be asked. Basically, we've got a development, a combination of Joseph France, one of the develop- the owner of the property here, and Chris Post, co-developer with him. Basically, we've got an entry coming off Aberina that will consist of construction of a new road. We're calling it Road A right now. We don't have a name for it. There'll be about six cabins on that road and 12 home, lake, 12 four-bedroom homes. So total of 18 homes coming in from Aberina and then on, coming in off Five Points. There's two existing homes coming off Five Points and we're looking at building six new homes there as well. Next month, we will be submitting a subdivision plan for the development. We didn't get that done in time to include in this submittal, but we do have a full set of civil drawings short of the subdivision plan. There is a connecting road between the two, between Five Points Road, the existing Five Points Road, and our new Road A. On that road, we will run a new six-inch water main in order to meet fire code. We did a, Chris Engineer did an analysis of the system and there was inadequate flow. We brought water from Aberina, water from Five Points, six point, six-inch lines for both sides, but the, the water flow was inadequate for fire protection and so we are adding a six-inch fire main along the construction road to connect the two water lines, which will increase water supply and fire flow both on Five Points and on Aberina. So it will help the adjacent property owners will be assisted in their fire protection and, and water flow in the process of this development. And we'll also be making some improvements on our side of the road on Aberina. There's kind of a dangerous drop-off on that side. We'll be adding curb and gutter and adding about two feet to the width of that road and the city's gonna cooperate and put some guardrails there on that. This was, Aberina was part of the county, was annexed as part of enclave area at B. So it's now part of the city, but it was originally constructed in the county and then annexed by the city. Trying to think of other things. The property's currently zoned RL. There's a, we thought at first we had 26 acres. If you took, take all of the acreage on the county assessor's map and add them all up, you got 26 acres. We had it surveyed and you got 21 acres and part of that 21 acres included Aberina on the side there. So it's, it's around 20 acres of land. Of the 20 acres, we're gonna develop about 14 acres. There's about six acres in the northeast corner that we're not developing at this time. When we do prepare to develop that, we will have to come back to the Planning Commission to get approval for that. So it's not like we're giving blanket approval to do anything in that area. If we do anything in that six acres in the northeast corner, we will have to come back to Planning G- Commission. to Planning Commission to get approval for that. So all we're asking for now is, uh, is the Planning Commission to approve us for the 18 homes coming in off Aberina, the six new homes coming off Five Points, total of 24 homes. If you take the 14 acres and an average RL subdivision, uh, you get maybe two houses per acre, uh, so two houses per acre times 14 acres, it'd be about 28 houses. We're doing, uh, 24 houses, uh, so we're doing actually four houses less than you, what you would have if you developed the same land under the existing RL code. But by doing a planned development, it protects the property owner's rights to, uh, use these properties as vacation and short-term rental, um, if, you know, so that, those, that right is protected for them. And the lots are a little bit smaller than RL would typically provide, but there's a lot of, it's a real steep property. Uh, the, all of the area in the northwest corner, south of the creek, we're not gonna do anything there. And then the, the two existing homes have a lot of property around them, and we're not planning on building any other houses around them at this time. That's about all I've got at this point. We did add some information to the narrative. Uh, there were some questions, uh, from staff about, uh, where we got our numbers for the five trips, uh, per house. There is some, uh, accompanying information we added. According to Bureau of Transportation Statistics Maps, the average weekly household vehicular trips by U.S. Census tract per day, if you look at the map, per the southeast corner of Garland County, that area has about four to six average trips per home. And I used a, I used a multiplier of five trips per home right in the middle of the four and six. Um, and again, some of the houses will be cabins and not full-size houses, and these are vacation rentals and likely are not to be occupied all the time as you might would have with a, with a residence. I don't know how I'm doing on time. Uh, but if you have further questions, I'd be glad to field those at any point. If you have any questions now, I'd be glad to field those as well.
So the existing houses, you're gonna leave those there?
Yes, sir. Yeah, they're, they're shown on the map in the two existing homes. There's a large house, huge house on the lake there, and then, uh, a smaller house north of that. Right now, Joseph's planning on living in the smaller house north and renting the big house on the lake.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Has anybody signed up to speak? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Mr. Steve Sims? And also, sir, if you'll tell us your name and your address.
Steve Sims.
And you'll have three minutes.
214 Starcrest Street. Um, we, our property, uh, there's two homes, actually three, on Starcrest Street, uh, just off of Buena Vista. And looking out of our backyard, you can look down the hill to Five Points Road. I'm curious how far closer to us will this development be? Right now, we, at least during the wintertime, we have a view of the lake. How will that impact us as far as the, the distance of where this property will be built to our, to our road, to our property?
Rick, can I ask?
I'm not sure if it's gonna be just on the lake, or if it's wanting to be actually up the hill to where we can view it.
I mean, you could ask the engineer if he would want to respond to that.
Sir, can we ask you to address this gentleman's question?
Sure. Yes, sir. Okay. I gave Mr. Sims and the other gentleman, uh, a copy of the plan beforehand, and, uh, it's about 360 feet of the six acres. Mr. Sims' property's on the north side of the property, and, um, there's about, uh, excuse me.
Thank you, Bobby.
There's about, gotta get our social distance here. Um, uh, so there's about six acres right now that we're not planning on doing anything with. The only thing that's gonna happen in the six acres is a construction road right now. Uh, and your, and your property is also at an elevation of about 490 feet, and everything we're gonna do is gonna be a lot lower there. Actually, if we even develop the six acres of land, you'd still be looking over it as high as your property is up there. Uh, but you're looking over, you're looking over this property to see the lake, so that's not guaranteed that you would have a lake view, because you're looking over somebody else's property. But at this point, I, I don't think, I don't think anything we're gonna do is gonna block your view from the elevation you're at anywhere. I'm not ever gonna leave it all woods.
You mentioned a road, so right now, I'm really concerned with the other development of, uh, Buena Vista that's going in. Um, traffic coming down Buena Vista, right now, it's, I'm concerned it'll be bottlenecked, and Starcrest Street is right at that little Y of Five Points.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So I'm curious as to how access to this new property, where that will be.
Well, the, uh... The access will be...
Off Buena Vista, is it?
Yeah.
They can't be from Walmart there.
Right, it'll be off Aberina.
Okay.
So Aberina to the west, and then Five Points to the east, and they'll be gated on both ends. And so actually, most of the 18 homes on the, on the west side, you'll probably never see that traffic. It'll go down Aberina and come onto Buena Vista and go west.
Because right now, Aberina's sort of dead end, like, go gated.
Yes, sir.
That, that'll be the main access.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the shortest path for traffic to Central Avenue.
Right.
I mean, other than going east, it's dead end.
Right.
Going, going toward your property, out toward the lake. Um, Hot Springs Creek creates a natural barrier that's only crossed by the bypass. Um, so, most of the, the 18, 18 of the 24 homes, new homes, will be down Aberina, and you won't ever see that traffic. And if, and even if they develop six acres, that'll probably go west as well. And the, uh, six houses will, right now, with the gates in there, they'll have to go out Five Points. Now, those, those, that traffic will come down to, I mean, right now, I guess you've got Buena Vista, and you've got Five Points, and you've got Starcrest all kind of coming, all three of them kind of coming in together there, but you'll only pick up about six houses, and that would be six times five, maybe 30 trips per day over a 24-hour period of time, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Megan? And you two, sir, if you'll please tell us your name and your address, then you'll have three minutes.
Robert Mahan, and I also live on Starcrest Street, 201 Starcrest Street. And, uh, some of my questions were just answered speaking Mr. Sims there. I'm curious if the land behind Mr. Sims' house that he was talking about and, uh, will I call it an access road now between the two? If that construction road, will those trees be left in between that road and his property?
Yes. At this point, at this point, the land and plans are really, uh, just, just... The, uh, the property has some, some major topographical challenges. Again, it's, you know, to Mr. Sims' house on top of the hill, it's 90 feet above the water. Water's at about 400 elevation. Mr. Sims' house is about 490. Um, we're gonna have to go over some, over some hills and cross some valleys in order to meet fire, fire prevention code, fire, fire truck access code, we, we are limited to 10%.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, Mr. France has jokingly said he could buy the City a fire truck for the way he's paying to knock, to move a mountain of dirt, and we're, we're already moving a mountain of dirt in order to meet that 10% grade.
It's challenging.
We're cutting 20, 40 feet off the mountain in order to get it, I mean, if we didn't have to meet the 10% grade, we could stay with the contours and save a lot of trees, but in order to meet fire code, we had to cut the hill down to meet grade. Um, uh, would've been cheaper on us not to have done that, too, but, um, anyway, yes, to answer your question, to meet, we will have to take down some trees in order to get it to grade, but most of the trees, um, on the landscape plan, it shows the area of disturbance. If you look at the L landscape plan, I think you've got that there, Dawn, the landscape plan, L1 at the back, shows the area of disturbance. And you can kind of see on there where we got the grading to, that's the limit of where we're planning on disturbing, where we're grading on, there, there, that was back one, there it is.
There it is.
That's the area of disturbance. You can see the, the dark lines, the area that will be cutting, um, and so the, between the, between the dark line in the north and the property line, those, those trees will remain in there. And they're called out as trees to remain.
Answering my question.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Glenda Dunn? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
Yes, I was curious about the intersection of Five Points, where it comes into Buena Vista and Starcrest Lane all come together right there. If there's going to be any improvements on where Five Points comes into Buena Vista, and will there be a stop sign there?
Um, just a moment.
There, there's no improvements proposed to that intersection, to my knowledge, as part of this project.
Okay, I'm curious about that. It's an awkward situation there a little bit, especially with the development, the other development right down the street from there, I'm sure you're familiar with.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Dunn? And your name and address, please.
Uh, my name's Glenda Dunn, and I live at 789 Buena Vista Road, and both developments are being done by Mr. France, so they're both involved in that. And, um, my concern and our concern at Lighthouse Cove is not necessarily, um, improvements being made in that area, it's the fact that they're short-term rentals. Mr. Um, France has already been approved for a 42-room VRBO, which in several references to the paperwork, it mentions, uh, previous approval is a hotel. And then they mention in here, as far as short-term rentals in the area, they mention his Hot Springs Lodge, that, um, they have been clearing the property for over a year now, or approximately a year. And then it rent, uh, mentions Buena Vista HPR, which it may allow for short-term rentals, but if you pull a back data scout, all the properties in there are owned by individuals, not a one-owner property that is rented out, um, for short-term. And again, our concern, as was mentioned before, is the traffic in the area because of the fact of Buena Vista. If you're a long-term or six-month resident of Buena Vista, you know the dangerous areas on Buena Vista. If you're an overnight tenant, then you're not gonna know the areas to watch out for and traffic there with Walmart, um, cars pulling in and out. Summertime, which will be the height of the rentals, the traffic is very bad there at Buena, um, Buena Vista and Central Avenue due to backup. Also, you've got backup that still comes now back with the, um, COVID situation with Chick-fil-A that comes that far back at points and times. Um, so the biggest issue that we have is the traffic for short-term rentals. It's not construction in the area. Um, if he wants to build them for six-month-plus rentals, we have no problems, because those people would get familiar with the roadway after a period of time. But when you've got someone coming to spend one night or two nights, they're not gonna be familiar. Um, Aberina is one that is very bad. Um, when you're pulling out onto Buena Vista, there's been numerous accidents there. Not too long ago, there was a car that, um, ran off Buena Vista and hit Larry's Body Shop. Um, you're disturbing the residential area of Buena Vista with these short-term rentals, hotels, most, whatever they, you wanna call them. I mean, when you put 42 rooms in one building, it's hard to just call it a, you know, a single-family or a residential multifamily when they're just staying overnight. Um, so that is our biggest concern with it, is the fact that he now has 42 rooms. Now, he's building 24 homes. All of these are gonna be short-term rentals. Um, you know, you just had the, the property on Malvern Avenue there at Suburban that was denied a permit for the fact that it was going to be, um, disrupting the neighborhood behind it, and this is gonna be disrupting Buena Vista, Buena Vista more than that would be with it being a low-density office environment versus overnight stay.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. The, everybody has spoken that signed up to speak, and the public discussion is now closed, the hearing portion, and the Planning Commission will now discuss. Commissioner Ramek, you have a question?
I do. Uh, this is for the, uh, the builder, the developer. Uh, what, on the Five Points there, for Five Point, I'm familiar with the area. Uh, the Five Points area, uh, are you gonna widen the road there, the Five Points Road? It wouldn't meet city code right now.
Yeah, it's a, it was a county road, and if, if you look at the map of the land in this corridor of land that's close to the busiest part of the city, it's been undeveloped because one gentleman owned a lot of it, or two or three gentlemen owned a big portion of that land. And that's really the reason we came in that area, is because it's close to all the congestion that's already in the city. It's not, you know, it's not coming in the neighborhood that, I mean, y'all took it into the city, but it's the closest high-traffic area that there is. So, uh, we, we don't have any plans on fixing the road, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, also, on the, on the wayward property, I can't remember what you call it, but, uh, that road is going to go in right next to that little red brick house?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Are you planning on buying that property, or does the red brick house can stay there?
Um, well, if they wanna sell it, yeah, we're interested in buying it, but, uh, I did make an offer on the property, and they didn't wanna sell it, so, uh, so we, we took a road above it. Of course, we're gonna landscape and make it nice, and you probably won't even see that house when we're done with, when, when we're done with it. Uh, so we want our privacy, too. We don't wanna be, we wanna make it nice and private for ourselves, too, and for the people that's gonna be there.
Well, I'm just concerned with that little red brick house, because, uh, during deer season, I drove by there, and they were gutting a deer right out in front yard.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I get it. I, no, I would love to have the house, but, um, the people, I, I even offered to buy them another house and swap them if they wanted to, and, um, just, we hadn't got anywhere yet, so, we might, and if we do, we'll buy it, and we'll make it nice.
Okay. And...
Can I get your name and address just for the record?
Yeah, my name's Joseph France. I'm at, uh, 254 Five Points is my address.
Thank you.
But as far as traffic, as Ms. Dunn was, was talking about, and short-term rentals, the reason we came in that area is because it's so close to the busy part of the city anyway. I mean, Walmart's right there, you got every restaurant within a mile, so it's, it makes, made sense to us to bring it there instead of taking it where they gotta come all the way through town or go somewhere else. It's right off the interstate, it's right there.
Thank you, sir.
Of course, I do think we do need some slow signs, like some slowdown signs on Buena Vista.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker. Michelle, do you have any questions?
Um, you know, I am kind of curious. My, my parents lived on Buena Vista for a while, and the traffic at the light, like Ms. Dunn said, is pretty bad. Is there anything that wants these, is there like a traffic study? Anything, has that been done, or is there any hopes that there might be some help with the traffic situation there?
Uh, to my knowledge, there is not...
That's a period that's like one way in and one way out of that area.
Yeah.
And how many units are there?
Total of 24 units being proposed, detached, or residential units, some of which could be used short-term, some could be long-term. Um, but to my knowledge, there has not been an official traffic study done. Uh, Project Engineer can correct me if, if that's wrong, uh, but I do not believe that a, an official traffic study has been conducted.
But I think that neighborhood people can often contact the, our local traffic department or the state traffic department and ask for studies, but that's kind of up to a neighborhood to request. Because I don't think there's any city requirement to do it. I don't know. Okay.
Well, traffic is my biggest concern through there. Uh, like Ms. Dunn said, to get in there to their property, it's an S curve, almost 90-degree, 90-degree, uh, going in there, and that area in there, the, the street right now is very narrow. And, uh, you know, I'd sure like to see y'all widen the road there to, uh, and then going into, uh, Five Points, uh, you know, it's a narrow road through there. Uh, so I'm just concerned, again, all the people that live, uh, northeast of there, uh, there're quite a few people that live back there, and they're gonna be having to contend with that area.
Well, Commissioner Ramek, perhaps they can get together and ask the state or the city for help, for a study, put up signs, something.
Can I answer Mr. Ramek's question, I guess?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
We, uh, we've been in, in communication with, uh, Pat Watson, the, the city engineering inspector, and Gary Carnahan, and, uh, Danny McFate, Public Works, of course. Uh, they, they're, they had had plans, again, this property was all county property, so it was a county chip and seal road. It's 14 feet wide. But again, the only part of our development that'll be going down Five Points is six houses, and it's really not any more than what you would have with the, in the current RL zoning. Six houses is not any more than you would've had if we'd built them according to RL's, it's already approved for. We're not adding any more houses than RL Zone already approves. Um, I understand that, you know, again, nobody want, everybody likes woods, and nobody wants development, and they don't want more traffic, and I understand that, but the property's already zoned RL, and you can't really not allow other people to develop their land. But, but the city has had plans to repave the road. They're basically going to hold off on repaving it till we're done with our development, so we don't, and we're also going to run a, a six-inch water main down Five Points from where Five Points Road turns off with a curve, the circle. And so we'll be doing some disturbance on the north side of the road, and so the city's going to wait and repave the road and bring it up closer to city standards after we finish our development, we finish our construction.
Okay, on San Carlos, above there, they have been putting in some kind of water line and gas line there. Do you know anything about that?
That's not part of our development.
No, I, I didn't know if that was part of the tying into the water main.
Well, we, we haven't started that yet. We do have Health Department, city approval, and we have Health Department approval, and we will be putting in, extending an eight-inch water main along, from Five Points, Starcrest, Five Points Road, right in there where they all come together. We'll be extending an eight-inch line all the way down to our property and across our property all the way to the lodge.
Okay.
So that's going to help the fire flow all the way down the community.
What about wastewater?
Uh, wastewater, we've had that evaluated, and, and there's, there's a lift station on Aberina already, and we're going to, it's been analyzed, and, and the, the current capacity's adequate to handle the new development.
Okay.
That was done by RJN, or FTN, FTN did that study.
All right, thank you.
It's been approved.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baker, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Walker, do you have questions?
No question. Oh, ma'am.
Commissioner Hobby? Oh, she's our quiet one. Did you write up any notes you want to show us, Carrie? No, okay. Commissioner Thomason?
No.
Thank you.
No question.
Okay. Any discussion, folks? Nope. Okay. Then I have a motion to approve item three, and the staff findings are to approve. Ms. Sweet Dobbs, would you please call the roll to approve?
Yes.
Carrie Hobby?
Approved, please.
Michelle Baker?
Approved.
Baker Jackson Goldsmith?
Approved.
LaDante Walker?
Approved.
Wayne Thomason?
Approved.
Rick Ramek?
Approved.
And Hillary Janet?
Approved.
Y'all are good to go, as far as we're concerned.
Okay, so that is an ordinance that will have to be forwarded to the Board of Directors. It looks like the board meeting that we would be shooting to get this on would be Tuesday, March the second. So that's when we anticipate this being able to make its way to the board for final consideration.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report. Mr. Stoddard, as our Director tonight, will you please read your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Or just tell us what's going on?
Really, the only, the only thing that I know to report on is the sad and unfortunate passing of Mr. McDugan.
Oh.
I'm sure everybody's probably heard about that already. If not, I mean, it's, it's pretty recent, but as you know, he served on many different boards, in different capacities, not only with the city and other parts of our community. He's a real advocate for Hot Springs, and, and he was a friend of mine. He'll be truly missed, so.
Lucky man.
Yeah, he was a, he was a great, great citizen, and it's just sad, sad in his passing. But I just wanted to mention that. Besides that, I really don't have anything else to mention.
Andre Dawson is coming for the baseball.
Awesome.
Very exciting. I'm sure that Mike did that.
Awesome.
Thank you. Then without further ado, meeting for February 11th is closed.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.